Welcome to the January 12, 2023 Palmer City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusyon.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus. Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is being livestreamed?
Yes, it is, sir.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting so that if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. And before we go to you, I have a quick, brief statement. A quick statement. Quick and brief would be the same thing. A brief statement. We are aware of an investigation into one of our board members. We cannot comment on the matter as it is both personal and a pending legal matter. Our focus as a board is and will continue to be the success of our students and the moving our district forward. Thank you. Dr. Smiley, floor is all yours.
Thank you. We're actually going to jump out of order just a little bit because we do have a large group of folks here to be recognized and we would like to respect their time and we're very thankful that they have come to share the evening with us and they will be rightfully celebrated tonight. So I'm going to come down, Mr. Vaughn, if you want to come down as well?
Absolutely.
First, we're going to start with the Parma hockey team. We're very proud to have a number of them here. Grateful to have a number of them here. We would like to recognize about the Palmer City High Hockey Team. On the November 6, 2022, Palmer City High School Hockey Team played an exhibition game. We were rocking wild with it at preschool. Wild games are a special hockey team. Both of them are children's facilities. They have players that range from age of six to up to thirty-six who are actually in those facilities. They all have different diagnoses including autism, specific learning disabilities, Down Syndrome, Wes syndrome, EHA, and EDP as well. There are only two teams like them in the entire state of Iowa, which means they must travel if they want to play more games. To help Wildcats pause, our hockey team presented this team to the chapter for $10,286. We give our high school. You know, it's always great when we can use our talents, community services, and then help provide the partners. And that's what you did happen. You took the time, you invested your opportunity, your talents, you invested the time with your family, making sure that your opportunities helped others with many challenges to have more opportunities. And I think that truly speaks to your character. It speaks to what you invest in and what you value. And we're very grateful that you are representing our Palmer City High School. We will call forward and if you can, we'll come forward. You can wait here because we'll take a picture at the end as well. We'll start with Coach. Come on up, sir. Do we have Dave, Dave Higginbaum too? Rick Behr, are you here, sir? Tim Hall. Josh Crawford. Andrew Seg.
This just authorizes you to do what you have to do. It doesn't put it on any ballot.
Correct.
Nick Higginbaum. Hale Marowski. Jacob Phillips. Justin Zekay. Allison Callahan. Tori Wessel. Mike, you know, it's a tough name and it just keeps coming up. Matt Zekay. Three tries, but I think I can pronounce your name. Congratulations. Andrew Lee. Justin Myers. Louise, Louis Chabestin.
Louis can't chill.
Carmen Zerney. David Priger. Derek Pierce. Cooper Davis. Andrew Barrett. Hal Phillips. Michael Odo. Nolan Sandy. And Tim Hall. I'd like to introduce our coach, who is a very, very highly regarded in our community from a hockey standpoint and also from a Parma standpoint. Very well respected, very grateful he took the time to have his team come and coach him to say a few words.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Sanist. Thank you for recognizing our program. The rest of the school board, obviously, thank you as well too. This has been something that we've been doing for like almost the last 10 years. We haven't even tried to put up a penny to it and a pencil and we raised almost close to $35,000 for this program over the last course of the eight, nine years that we've been doing this. Actually, it started when we had a differently abled trainer approach me about wanting to join the team in some capacity. So we made him our equipment manager and he had to play on this team. And that's how it all started, actually. So we got to thank Luke for opening the door for us. He was the one that actually got us going in that direction. And this is just something that we decided to do every year. We plan to do it in the future as well too, even though, you know, things are going to be different in the district next year. We're still going to look to host these games. That program is a part of our family. They've been for a long time. And what we do for them is, it helps them. It helps the families a lot. There's a financial burden for them to travel. We were able to provide equipment for them. They travel all over the nation. They go to Buffalo, they go to Detroit, Pittsburgh, Columbus, play on their differently abled teams. So I'm proud of our kids as the community should be as well because it's a humbling experience for them and the kids love it. And we look forward to it every year. So we're going to continue that relationship as we go in the future. So we'd like to thank the board for recognizing us for something outside of athletics. It is an athletic team, but what we've done is beyond winning and losing on the other. So I want to thank you guys for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I'm just going to ask, does anybody know the Sanist's wrestling match? Because I think I understand a lot of our football players are wrestling right now. 6:30 they'll be done? Can I ask this? Are you okay if we do a couple presentations? If you guys, yeah, definitely. Great. Because I don't want to.
There's a lot.
I also want to say, well, I have everything set. I was converted to equipment manager a couple times too. I didn't realize. I thought they really needed my talent to sort it.
Things like that that really make me happy to do what I'm doing up here. I enjoy seeing our student body coming up and doing things like that. That's out of, out of the athletic realm for sure. And definitely it shows their character and their coaches' character. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, we're actually going to go ahead with the Parma Park presentation then this evening. Mrs. Jewell, say it again, Pam? Okay, we have a delay. We're not connected to the internet right now. We're working through it though. Or I could go sort some equipment. Had my whole high school career.
Yep. Sorry for the delay. Technology is wonderful when you have it. When you don't have it, it's not so good.
I think I have the internet. I don't know if I'm that connected. I mean, you want to give it to her and see if she can... No.
Is that phone about to explode or what? Can you do it without the slides?
All right, we have the presentation in front of us.
Yes. I know. I just was trying to. Trying to get the dead time on. I'm getting beat up enough on here.
Here comes a wrestling guy, I think. Or football guy. Football slash wrestling. Might work well.
You could recognize them while doing the IT stuff.
Right. Is that everybody from the football team that wrestled? Is that everybody's going to be here?
No, no, everybody's still being careful.
Okay. Were you the guys that were wrestling and we're good to go? What's that? We can probably do that, right?
I think she thought there were a few more coming. How many, how many more do you think we have wrestling still?
Two more.
Two more?
Okay.
All right, that's, we can get going then because they'll hopefully trickle in while we're reading. We're going to jump back to the Greenbrier.
All right, friends, we're back after a brief hiatus. Sorry about that. We recognize this evening following Greenbrier Social Football Team members. Nevada Forest High School, Greenbrier Middle School, eighth grade football, they attend, they play for the eighth grade at Greenbrier. Complete in a perfect undefeated eight no season on October 11th, led the Fairview Warriors since the 20th to eighth day. The undefeated 2022 season was extra special for the eighth grade boys as they had also gone undefeated for their seventh grade year as well, compiling a sixteen and zero record over two years. It's not only set a school record, but also district record for the seventh and eighth grade teams. The eighth grade team was led by Coach LaHa and Coach Klemick, both of whom have coached at Greenbrier for the last 22 years. Coach LaHa, coached normally four years prior to coming to Greenbrier, Coach Klemick coached in Cleveland, Mississippi. For Coach LaHa, this team out of hunger to be the first team in school history to go back to back. A medal with them at the end of their seventh grade season, we talked about the difficulty of being a marked team with the entire league circling them out in California. They understood the challenge and worked tirelessly all season to meet that challenge. They overcame injuries to starters, the backups picked up, or the starters left off. They had perhaps the biggest comeback from behind victory in school history, down 24-6 to undefeated Westlake at Westlake. They came back with three unanswered touchdowns to win 26-24, scoring the final touchdown with one minute left in the game. The team was well-rounded and got better and better all season. Coach Klemick and I are very proud of their team unity and work ethic, especially when difficulty arose. The team captains are Lucas Schlinger, thanks to Lucas and Jack Boswell, led the team by example all season and carried the team throughout their difficulties. We give a round of applause to the Greenbrier Middle School. Now, if anyone can call your name, please come to the front. Can you give a say of standing? Let's start with our coaches, Coach LaHa and Coach Klemick. Coach, congratulations. Okay. Sure, let's recognize also Coach Shoemaker, who was their seventh grade coach. Nathaniel Abreu. Fernando Asameo. Adam Beckley. Christian Causenguerra. Michael Fizer. Hayden Hegel. Carter James. De'Andre King. Zemani Asuwo-Javison. Preston Bontehewa. Alexander Huberdan. Aiden Ackland. Jack Boswell. Brody Daniels. Any one of his wrestling matches? David Gill. Anthony Har. Dylan Jozback. Kasper Lysikczynski. Nailed it, right? Daniel Rooney. Michael Premiano. Amir Akubay. Karen Tardner. You got somebody there too, still wrestling. Justin Chong. Aiden Dillon. Quentin Cuera. Justin Har. De'Andre Kidd. At least 14 wrestlers. Lexton Lucas. Aiden Tito. Jacob Rodriguez. Caleb Scarborough. Aiden Soto. Ayla Wood. Lucas Schlinger. Tyler Wyszynski. Travis Sees. Miles Wyszynski.
Right. It's just weird showing in business, not in policy, because it looks and sound like it's a policy. Not business. Getting confused. And I can't get on the internet to look it up.
Congratulations.
Maybe she got her sister. For today. For today.
Yeah, did you say her?
She'd be drooling over something new to come in life.
Yeah. Damn, we ready or not? Hey, we're going to, we're going to go Parma Park first then. Okay. Go Parma Park first.
Okay, moving at lightning speed. We're going to turn to our school report now at Parma Park, but we are grateful. I know everybody's departed, but it's always great to recognize students and we're happy that we had so many in attendance today. We're going to turn it over to Mrs. Jewell, who is our fearless leader at Parma Park Elementary.
All right, you guys changed the location on me. So, you know, we're creatures of habit. I'm used to the board office, so I'm not sure where to focus and go. So we brought the hard copy and two different glasses to see if we could navigate all of this. So one of the things we are asked to do as principals, a lot of things, but one of our favorite things to do is to talk about our school. So I am going to start talking about our school. Dr. Smiley asked us to highlight for both of our playbooks, two things that we're doing well with data to support it and one of our areas of concerns. So we'll start with one of the aspects on our report card. We received a four out of five stars in our closing the gap, according to the state of Ohio. This is exceeding performance that is expected. Obviously, we want to go for five, but we are quite thrilled that we received a four on our report card with that. Now, we are such a small school, so our subgroups are small. So the four categories would be the economically disadvantaged, Hispanic, the whole school, and then white, non-Hispanic. So we are moving in the right direction and we want to continue to move that direction. So how did we get there? Implementing the school board, school board adopted curriculum and common curriculum assessments, our BLT and our TBTs, really take the time to analyze that data and really drill down to find those skills, what we have to do to put into our practice so that we can keep moving those kiddos forward. And then we try to engage our parents as partners in our instructional piece as much as possible. So kudos to our staff on that. The second strength is we have been working really hard on trying to move our math pieces. And you'll see some math themes going throughout our, what our kids said about math. So going back to our report card that we received in the fall from last year, our math OST scores. So this is for our third and our fourth grade students. Our third grade are to the left. You can see in 2018, we had the arrow going the way we did not want it to go on both third and fourth grade. Then you see a gap in the middle and that was during that wonderful COVID year. So we did not have to do so we did not have to do state testing in the area of math. But we came back strong with a vengeance and if you can see, last year, the trend line is up. Third grade is rocking it out over 72.2% and then our fourth grade are, are approaching the 70%. Just a different perspective, um, on this next slide. If you look at the third grade, Parma Park is the column in the left. Uh, the district is in the middle and the state is to the right. So, I'm always thrilled and when we are outperforming what the state, uh, averages, so, uh, really impressed with that. And then our fourth grade, not quite as high, but we're neck and neck with the state. So, hopefully, we'll see some results of that next year, so we're pretty proud of that. And this is just another format to put it in there, just to show the difference. Apparently Saturday, it was very happy with our data and put three slides in. All right. Uh, so how did we do this? So, we really use our MAP data, which is one of our vendor-approved, um, assessments that we look at our benchmark skills. And one of the things in our MAP program is we can really drill down and see the areas that the students are struggling with, so that way we can focus on that, focus on those skills and move those kiddos. Um, our pie time, are you all familiar what pie time is in elementary world?
Why don't you go ahead and explain that?
Okay, so, we have our ELA block and our math block and, and science and, and social studies block, but we have a 35-minute period of time where the grade levels worked, or the grades, teacher mates work together, so all second grade teachers, we look at all the second grade kids, we look at our data, and we group our kids, those who need prevention, those who need intervention, and those who need enrichment. And they get very specific skills that are to themselves so that we can help them grow. So, you're gonna hear that pie time come up a few times tonight in this presentation. So, one of the things that we've done differently is last year, uh, we started incorporating math into our pie time. Historically, it was, it was pretty much ELA that we did. But what we did is we looked at our data and that kind of drove what we did. So, it was unequal across the grade level. So, for example, our third grade, um, based on the data, so these would be this year's fourth graders, um, they needed a little extra time, so they had their math pie groups two days a week. We had one grade level that their math data on their benchmarking looked really well, so they only had math pie one day a week, the other four days was ELA. Then we took some kiddos who were kind of struggling in both and we kind of created a sub pie group. So, they kind of split, so some kids were doing L- ELA, some were doing math. Now, it's a scheduling nightmare for the teachers and I'm gonna look at my two teachers sitting here 'cause they're gonna be going, "Yeah, Jewel, we know," because they have to do it. But I do believe that has, that is why we have made a difference and really are moving those math scores. So, this fall, because of, the next thing I'm gonna talk about, we really focused on ELA. But right now, we started our benchmark scores, uh, our benchmarking process. Um, we'll get all of our results, although we've, we're really excited with some of the results that we're seeing so far. And then we will determine how much math and how much ELA that we put in there. Or we'll have that conversation within our, um, BLTs and our DLTs to do that. The other thing I think we're, we are doing that is making a difference in that is, you know, one of the things that our parents say is, "This is not how we were taught math." They can't help their kids with the homework and it's true, math looks very different. But what we do know is, kids do need to be able to demonstrate and explain how they got to that answer, but there's multiple ways to get there. So, one of the things our teachers are doing is, as they are teaching them the various strategies to solve the problem, the kids get the choice in selecting which ones work for, better for them. For some, the strategies click easier for some kids and for others, they struggle with it. So, we want them, we show them all, we teach them all, we want to make sure that they understand them all, but if this one works best for you, you use it. As long as they can explain it and they're getting the correct answer, then we're gonna go with that. So, that's how I think we are accommodating with that now. All right, so to the one, not so good. Um, our, our concern is our early literacy scores. This is according to our report card, we received a two, two out of five stars. So, this was really devastating to us and this was not okay with us. Uh, one thing that we do know is that when, uh, we see something we don't like, we get very determined. And we are very determined to change this and we have a very specific plan to do that. So, our action steps is, we first are in alignment with our district, uh, with, and Parma Park has their Ohio Improvement Goal, where the teachers will model early foundational skills for progression of early literacy skills. How we're gonna get there is we are focusing on explicit and systematic literacy skills instruction in both our core and in our pie instruction. Remember that pie is that, that little piece of time where we really see where all those kids are. Um, and then this is based on the science of reading, so this is the evidence-based, all the research-based. And what we know about reading, reading skills and how kids read is very complex. And what we know on how to teach reading is very different than many of us were prepared several years ago in our teacher prep, which is kind of exciting because now I think all of us have felt like, okay, we know these kids aren't getting it, but how do we get them to move past it? And some of the skills and some of the things that we're learning is really going to move these kids and that's through that explicit and systematic instruction. The other piece of this that it also, um, what we're doing also aligns with the Ohio Dyslexia Guide, and as you know, next year, we'll be having the legislation put in place and we will have to follow, um, ODE's guidelines for dyslexia, so we're ahead of the game. I really give our district props for that because they're, you know, we're ahead of the game on that and we're really trying to wrap our head around that so that we can move our kids. Um, one of the things we have been learning through the letters training, and this is a district-sponsored, um, uh, research, uh, class that we're taking, is the four-part processing system. And what we have learned is, of this group, this is where our kids get stuck. So, in one of these processing models, this is where our kids are getting stuck on there and it's our job to figure out where that clog is, where they're getting stuck at, and then what are we gonna do about it? So, we're really focusing on finding out where students are getting stuck in the reading process and we're doing that by using some diagnostic screeners, um, to help us better laser-focus on what those skills are to teach. So, if you think about going to a general practitioner or doctor, you know, they can kind of give you that general health, but if you suspect something's wrong, they typically will send you to a specialist so that they can run more tests. So, think of it that way and that's how we're thinking about it. So, okay, we've got some general information from our benchmark data, we see they're not progressing, now we need to take to that next step and we need to figure out what's going on for that. And then, excuse me, and all of our professional development and staff meetings are all aligned with the early literacy content and strategy. So, tomorrow's a professional development day, I get to be the teacher of the teachers tomorrow and that is what we're focusing on. It is all about this early literacy and breaking it down. We're gonna do some differentiated instruction by grade level, um, the second part of that. But what we will be looking at is the diagnostic screeners, how do we implement them? How do we select them? What information is it giving us? And most importantly, how do we put that in our instruction so that we can see kids grow? For this letters training, the district has offered it, but it has not been made mandated. So, 13 out of our 18 teachers, we have 21 teachers, I did not include our, um, art, music, and PE teacher in the 18. So, if you think about the 18 teachers who do teach, um, general curriculum and our, and that would include our title and our special education teachers, 13 out of 18 of them either are currently enrolled or have taken the letters training. Many, many of them are on the second phase of that, of that letters training. Um, of the five who did not, or have not so far, um, two of them are retiring and two out of the three are already in graduate school and it's a pretty intense course. I am now taking the course, it's a six-credit course and I think it's fascinating, exciting, but it is a lot. So, I think 72% of our Parma Park teachers taking it. I'm very proud of the fact that, when I said that they get determined, this would be an example of they get determined. Um, and then what we're actually doing is, now that we've got some background knowledge of the science and the reading and the letters training, we now are taking all of that knowledge and now our job is to apply it into the classroom. You know, how many trainings do we go to in our, in our career, but we never really implement that? So, part of the focus of tomorrow's PD as well and what we'll be doing, um, through TBT discussions, our day-to-day discussions, is now saying, okay, here's what we know, here's how we have to apply it, here's how we're gonna do it in core, here's how we're gonna do it in pie. And what we're seeing so far, um, we're right in the middle of benchmark dating. So, when kiddos, when, when kids did not meet benchmark back in September when we did their first of the year, we have to go back and progress monitor kids. And progress monitoring means that every 10 days, we're looking to see the instruction that we're giving them in pie, how they're doing on that. And so, when we started looking, um, we had a principal TBT, um, gosh, before the holidays. And so, as we're looking through the data, what we're seeing is, with the application of the things that we've been putting in place, our progress monitoring data, we had grade levels that, we look at rate of improvement and we had our second and third grade, they were in the 70% of all those kids were making improvement on that. So, sometimes principals don't always get excited around benchmark time and OST time, that's the state test in the spring, but this year, I'm actually really excited because I really think we're going to see some gains in that. So, while we're gonna see if kids grow, and I do believe the preliminary discussion or preliminary data that's coming out is that our kids are growing, we may not necessarily see it on the benchmark and here's why. So, for example, our third grade students, so across the board last year when they were in second grade, Parma Park students, that was, they had the hardest time, struggled, uh, in terms of, we saw them way significantly down in their data, but we also saw that in Parma City schools and we also saw it across the state of Ohio, so they are now in third grade. So, when we're progress monitoring those kids, I have kids who are being progress monitored at the kindergarten level, the first grade level, and the second grade level, even though they're third graders. So, when they're taking this benchmark test, what says, here's what third graders should be at halfway through their year, they may not make that third grade benchmark, but they have moved, may have moved from kindergarten and halfway through first grade and we need to celebrate that. And I need to remind the teachers of that because they're gonna get discouraged with that. But those kids who are on the bubble, they're the ones who we're gonna see them move on that data. So, we're excited to see that data. Hopefully, in about a week, we'll get them all done and we'll go from there. All right. Excuse me, now we'll switch to our other playbook in terms of a resilient learner and our, um, our area of strength. Um, like many of the Parma schools, we did receive the PBIS Silver Award this year. Our tier-one score was a 26 out of 30 and we're really proud of our tier-two score, we missed it by one point, was a 25 out of 26. But, you know, it's nice to be recognized, but it's really about making sure that we're teaching the kids the skills so that they can regulate themselves. Uh, we have two of our members in our audience, audience who have worked really hard on that and that's really what we're proud of. So, how we got there? Um, our Resilient Learner Committee, Committee created a referral process and procedures and facilitated staff training in our PBIS Resilient Learner Model last year, so they did a really nice job with that. Our Resilient Learner Tier Two Committee analyzed the data to determine if the interventions that we were giving the kids were working. And then our Parma Park staff, I think this is always what makes the, the difference, we're, we're dedicated to making sure students were successful. And we did that through a variety of means, through mentor check-ins, check-outs, and our individual programs, uh, for students and our staff volunteered to do the mentoring and the check-in and checkout with that. I also want to give, uh, Mr. Keating credit because we had the pleasure of having Mr. Keating with us last year and he really took the bulls by the horns and really worked with the RL Committee to make sure that we had all those systems and processes. And more importantly, he collected all that data and submitted it to the state for the award, so, uh, we want to make sure Mr. Keating, uh, is recognized for his hard work in this piece of it as well. The other area in Resilient Learner is the implementation of our restorative practices. So, we have been working on daily community, community meetings or morning meetings, uh, as well as facilitating restorative practices. So, we polled our, uh, homeroom teachers to see how many of them are doing morning meetings or daily community meetings, uh, and how many of them have facilitated restorative circles. And we have 100% uh, with that. Our en-cour teachers are doing some community meeting work, but it's, you know, the structure of that is a little bit different. And then, um, but they do do some circles, but the percentages were about 78% of our en-cour teachers, um, doing circles within that. And then how we achieve this? So, last year, um, we took the, the book, Hacking School Discipline, and at every PD and staff meeting, we chucked it down in a jigsaw method where the teachers were assigned chapters and then they would teach the other teachers, uh, the book and we were, we were able to get through the whole book and have discussions on how to implement that in our classrooms. Uh, we continue professional, professional development on our restorative practices this year. We surveyed the staff in the beginning of the year of what areas, there's certain areas in there that they want more training on, so that's driving our training for this year. We've also made sure that morning meeting is built into our master schedule time. It's typically right after attendance and lunch count. Uh, it's a way to set the tone of the day, um, to teach those social emotional skills and really kind of just check in with kids because sometimes stuff happened the night before and it gives the teacher a really good idea of how they kind of have to navigate through that. But we also have other times, if you can guess, it's one of the principals' favorite time of the day that we might need to pull a community meeting. Any guesses? Think elementary school, principals' favorite time of the day.
After lunch.
Lunch and recess. You know, there might be a little drama that happens at, at recess, so oftentimes, uh, teachers will pull a circle together or a community meeting because they know if they don't take care of all this, that's happening then, they're gonna interrupt their instruction. So, we say community meeting and morning meeting interchangeably because whenever there is a need for it, our teachers do, do what they need to do so that they can get to the instructional pieces of that. And then the other thing I think is really important is that as teachers are seeing the successes and the results of the restorative practice in the classroom, it also, they do that more because they see that it works for their kids. All right, so like I'm sure many principals have, um, reported, uh, this is our area of concern because we talk about this in our, in our principal meetings, um, and through our PEPA meetings because we're always trying to figure out, how do we change this? So, and that is chronic attendance. Now, our average daily attendance is 93%, which is pretty good. It's actually up from last year, but we know last year, we had a lot of COVID, a lot of quarantining and things of that nature, but we are seeing a trend of chronic attendance across the board. So, in 1718, we're at 7.8, 1819, 10.5, last year it was 43. Again, that included all of our kids that were, um, sick with COVID or were quarantined. Um, unfortunately, I think it was Parma and Shiloh received a Parme Award of the Most Contact Tracing, so we had a lot of kids that we were doing. All right, Mr. Hoon. Uh, and then, uh, so far, as of Tuesday's data, we have 4.9% of our, um, kids that are considered chronically, have chronic attendance. And so, chronic attendances, if they miss 10% of a school year. And then for report card purposes, where impacts our report card is, if we have 10% of our population miss 10% of the school year, it impacts our report card in a negative manner. There's two different, uh, attendance pieces that we track and one is a house bill and, but if there are excused absences or medical conditions, it doesn't impact the school. With the report card, it does not matter if the kids had, uh, serious illness and that there is a, an excused absence, they just look at absences, period. So, that's where it's very frustrating as a principal because we know that sometimes life happens and kids do need to stay home from school. So, right now, we're at 4.9%, that means 12th of our students already have 17 days and we're only halfway through the school year. What I'm concerned about is the 30 kids that are right behind them that already have 10 to 16 days. So, I can't do anything about those 17 kids 'cause they've already hit those, or those 12 kids 'cause they've already hit the threshold. We're still gonna work to try to get them there. But those 30 kids, that's where we're really trying to intervene. Uh, we have a home liaison that works, partners with us to make sure that we are doing what we can. So, how are we doing this? So, what we're trying to do is to try to find out what are the barriers of, why aren't kids coming to school? And these are the patterns that we found. We found that there are medical issues and we have some kiddos with some very serious illnesses. We have a couple of kids who had COVID last year and they are having complications from that and they do need to be out for a period of time. We also have students, uh, I'm sure as you know, with mental health issues and sometimes the issue is a student and sometimes with the parents, it just depends. Sometimes it's a transportation and a work schedule issue. So, for example, uh, I work night shift, I don't get home, can't get to my house until 10:30 in the morning, uh, it's too late, I'm not gonna bring them to school. Or because I work night shift, I have to take them to grandma's house that lives in Maple Heights. Grandma doesn't drive, grandma can't get them to school. So, sometimes that's a real issue with that. But then what we try to do to remove the barrier, if at all possible, is we do have EDC at Parma Park, that Early Daycare or After School Program. Now, parents do have to pay for that, but sometimes our parents don't know that's an option and in a couple instances, we were, they didn't know that and once they were aware of that, they were able to be enrolled into the program and then their attendance approved with that. Uh, the ecology of the family, some of our families are going through some really life-stresser moments right now and they need to take care of what's going on in there. The trend though, that I am seeing over the last few years are vacations and, uh, visiting family that are overseas for an extended period of time. And while we discourage vacations, basically, what they will tell me is the rates are cheaper when kids are in school, because kids are in school and they're going. And so, that is a trend though, that I am seeing in the last five years, we're seeing an increase with that. And then, you know, the, the reality is, um, there are some parental views of education and the law about education just differs. And so, when we can remove the barriers and when we can help parents connect them and give them resources for mental health, that's what we do. Um, so we try to attack the ones that we can and, um, some lady in the audience here once told me that you can only control what you can control, so, but we work very hard to remove the barriers when we can. So, but we work very hard to remove the barriers when we can. Again, we partner with parents as best as we can, and then, we do some reinforcer programs with some of our individual students. A few years back, we had a student who she was, I'll stereotype and say, a girly girl. She loved getting her nails done. So, we put a program in place that acts X amount of days in a row. Mrs. Jewel became the manicurist, not a very good one, but I would pay permission from the parent, of course, and she would get her hands painted. We have a girl now who has had a, she's third grade, had a historical pattern since kindergarten, and we've really tried to partner with this parent. She is now showing a little bit more interest in school, and because she is older, she has a little bit more, hey, Mom, I want to go to school. But we found out that she loves to cheerlead, so the Parma Park Cheer Squad was born this year, because she has to come to rehearsals during her recess time in order to be on the cheer squad. So, those are the kinds of things that we try to hook in, what our kids like, what they can do, and if we can control that, then we'll go from there. All right. Highlights of Parma Park. So, one of the things that we have really tried to do is to have that atmosphere of everybody is welcome. You know, I think that's the one thing that's very unique about Parma City Schools, as well as Parma Park, is we have such diversity in our schools, and we really wanted to change the narrative of, ew, what's that smelly thing you have in your lunchbox, to, oh, cool, that must be what your family serves. And it took us a while to get there, but we did some very purposeful things to do that. We have monthly themes, falls under our embrace all, but even before we were doing a brace all, we were doing this. So, we were starting to celebrate family traditions. So, whether your family eats pierogies, or tacos, or whatever it is, and some of our kids, they come on our morning announcements, and they tell us about their hot dogs and Bush's baked beans, because that's their tradition on July 4th. And that needs to be recognized as well. We did have a Celebrate Our Diversity, we did a Ticket Around the World book, which really highlighted some of the countries that our kids were from, and a culminating event is, we had a cultural event at the end of the year. So, the picture on the right are two girls who are families from Serbia, and they brought all of their stuff, they presented, they had a little booth, they were so proud to talk about their homeland. The family in the middle is from Afghanistan, so they were sharing their culture. And then, on the right-hand side, it's, that picture's a little bit hard to tease out. So, when we would do the morning announcements, and the kids would highlight where they were from, I do believe that child was, family was from Italy, and then during the lunchroom, we'd show videos and music of that country, so that the kids are seeing that. And you would be surprised how much those kids really like seeing, especially anything with different costumes or different kind of music with that. So, we're really working hard for that. So, when we're talking about things that are interesting or highlighting of Parma Park, I know what I think. You know, I love this little community school, but to me, it's more important about what our kids think, so we ask our kids. So, our K-1 students, I just talked to them, I would pull them during their lunch and recess time, and just asked a very open-ended question of what's interesting about Parma Park, because I wanted to see where they would go. And then, I asked my second, third, and fourth grade teachers to use it as a writing prompt, and so, they did. So, Saturday night, I sat down to look through them, and I had looked through all the recordings that I did for K-1, and we certainly found some things, some of these made me laugh out loud. So, overall, these are some of the things that our kids think is pretty cool about Parma Park. The playground, friends. Now, water bottle filling station kind of surprised me, but I guess if you're five, and you go to the water fountain, and you can fill your bottle up, that is pretty cool. So, the water bottle filling statement for K-1 students was what they were really excited about. They love being an eager eagle. Parker, our mascot, is a big deal, they want to know if he's real. And to a great surprise and a principal's love, they talked about learning to read and math, so it wasn't just the playground. The other thing that, of course, warmed my heart, and these were the two sentences where I pulled the language, we embrace all of our differences and celebrate, then we learn about other cultures. So, they are listening, and they are paying attention, and that they think it's pretty cool that we have students who speak so many languages. Interesting fact is, as we were preparing for some of our cultural fairs last year, we were looking at birth certificates, and we found that we had 30 countries represented, and that's just first and second generation, so we know that there's much more. So, when we talk about diversity, if we really looked at Parma Schools, I mean, we are such a diverse group. But the one thing, before I go to the next slide, is what I really realized after I went through, gosh, 200 and something of second and third, fourth grade writing, is I was looking at love letters to Parma Park. And what become, became abundantly clear to me is how much they love their teachers and their staff at Parma Park. Remember, this prompt was not guidance, it was whatever you think is. And so, the fact that over 80% of the kids wrote about how much they love their teachers and the staff here, including our recess monitors, and our cafeteria lady tells me we're doing something right. So, these are some of the excerpts that I pulled out. The teachers are cool, kind, and amazing, the teachers take care of us, they make us smart, teachers make our brains grow. This one cracked me up a bit. They teach us that working hard is good for the mind and body. That sounds like something Beth Schreffler, who's down there sitting, might have taught her kids. They make us feel safe, sometimes I get scared about things, but they make it okay. And they save us and put us first. This was probably the one I really enjoyed the most. Teachers are assertive, because that could go in a lot of different directions, which means they have superpowers, they are Wonder Women. Our monthly theme this week, or this month, is Wonder Women. We are celebrating leaders, so the fact that they're paying attention, we are mostly female staff, so that they think our staff are Wonder Women. What also became abundantly clear, though, is that the closing of Parma Park is on their mind. I was really surprised, not surprised, on how many kids wrote about, they're sad about it, they're afraid, they're scared, they don't want to leave. So, it was just another reminder that it's our job to acknowledge those feelings and validate those feelings, but to also teach them and let them know that they're going to be okay, and that it's okay, they're going to be part of a new family, and that they're going to be part of a new school community. So, our March faculty meeting, we just talked about, we had a faculty meeting yesterday, and that'll be the focus of our staff, staff meeting next month in February, to talk about how do, what are the things that we need to do, what do we need to put in our morning meeting, what are the rituals we need to put in so that we could recognize that. We don't want them to perseverate in it, but now that we're in second semester, you know, the beginning of the year, we got all year, but now, here we are. And so, our job is to make sure that we send our kids off with the right message. You know, going into this year, I knew, as a leader, it might be one of my toughest years, because how do we acknowledge the feelings, not only from the students and the parents, but our staff? But how do I keep people focused on the very important work that we have to do? Because yes, Parma's closing, but we have kids now, and we have a very important job to do. And I'm glad to report to you, they're on it. I mean, many of them, and the ones that we're going to honor tonight, I have seen more of a diligence, and I think it's because, like I said, that early literacy score was not okay with us. And so, I am very proud to say that our staff has just stayed focused in doing what they have to do, and I appreciate and I respect that. All right. Now, we get to the part where principals really like, and we like to recognize and talk about our wonderful staff. So, as I'm sure you heard from other principals, always hard picking the two, I always look at both of our sides of our playbook. A lot of people rise to the occasion, but then, the two teachers that I selected tonight are really ones who took the letters training and implemented it right away. They didn't just let it stay up there, they didn't marinate it, they have been implementing, and they're excited about it, and they're asking for resources about it. And that then tells me that they're the ones that I need to recognize tonight. So, the first person I'd like to recognize is Mrs. Kristin Chaconi, who's like, oh, gosh, she's talking about me. She has been a teacher for 19 years, 11 at Parma City Schools, and all 11 at Parma Park. So, Kristin is just a model teacher, she exemplifies both sides of our playbook, but what I will say with Kristin, even before there was embrace all and Resilient Learner, she was fostering community, she was fostering circles, we just didn't call it then at the time. She understands that kids need a little extra, and that she understands that in order to get to the academics, we have to pay attention to the social emotional. So, Kristin, thank you, and I respect all your work that you do, so thank you.
So, you're going to go through all of them, and then you guys can come up afterward, okay?
Okay. All right. Our next one is Mrs. Beth Schreffler, she's kind of Kristin's partner in crime. Beth is a general, or, excuse me, a special education teacher. She teaches three grade levels. We have her on the run, so she is through K to 2, but she is currently partnered up, Mrs. Chaconi also has the inclusion classroom this year, and so, they work hand in hand. So, together, they are, they are quite the team. Their other two teammates are just as fabulous. Beth's been a teacher for 28 years, 27 of those in Parma Schools, she came from Chicago, and 25 years she has been at Parma Park. And very much just like Kristin, she has taken this letters training and implement, and she works with some of our most struggling kiddos that are on IEPs and have a hard time reading. And as I'm in classrooms to see these kids growing, it's amazing. And my favorite is when they're like, Mrs. Schreffler, you forgot to do this part. They will call her on it, but the fact that these kids are moving is the great work that you are doing. Beth is also somebody who has been implementing our Resilient Learner before there was a Resilient Learner. Both of them understand kids with trauma, and that kids with trauma, it's not about a consequence, it's about building a positive relationship in time, and they understand that, and they have worked with some of our toughest, toughest kids over the years. So, thank you, Beth, respect the work that you do. All right. Mary Hart. Mary Hart is a team leader for our EDC program. She has been with Parma Schools for 19 years, 17 of those years she has been at our EDC program. When I was first hired seven years ago, they were explaining to me, EDC really isn't part of Parma Park, but it's at Parma Park, you don't have to worry about that. I'm like, huh, okay. Then I met Mary, and you know how when you meet people, and you're like, you're my kind of people? Mary's my kind of people. I knew off the bat that we would get along, and we have partnered ever since then. The kids don't necessarily know that, it's sort of kind of separate, but not really, because they're my kids, they're our kids. And so, we support each other, hopefully, she feels supported for me, and then she definitely supports us, even when she's off duty in the morning, she works both our morning and our afternoon program. And most importantly, she lets me come in and play with the kids. Sometimes, I might cause a little bit of a ruckus, because, you know, that's my free therapy at night, and she lets me come in and play Legos with kids, so I appreciate that, Mary. So, Mary, thank you for all your hard work, and respect the work that you do. All right. Last but certainly not least, Mr. Haslam. Larry Haslam is our recess monitor, and I don't know if you're aware of, but recess monitors, you know, we go through them quite often, I mean, it's two and a half hours a day, the pay's not so great. Larry has been with Parma City Schools for five years, and he has been with us all five years. We were lucky, he decided to retire as a security officer from Cleveland Clinic, and he came in and interviewed, and I'm like, it's like herding cats, they outnumber us, but he was up for it. So, he's been with us for five years, and it's kind of like dog years with recess monitors, so he's been here for 45 years, so thank you, Larry. Thank you, we appreciate that. But what I respect about Larry, and why his role is so important, our playground sits on the side of our school, and there's the intersection of the two streets, so no offense. So, as a principal, those are the things that wake me up at 3 o'clock in the morning and go, ugh, what could happen? But when Larry is out there, he is constantly scanning the environment, he knows when to call me and let me know something, you know, Mrs. Jewel, that car has come around the block three times and has slowed down. We have people who think Parma Park is a community park during the day, and like to come in and play on, you know, sometimes they are community kids. And he does it respectfully, and if, you know, the community doesn't respond, he will get me. He does safety, monthly safety drills, you just did one the other day. He does stranger danger awareness. Our PBIS program, I will never forget, we kind of revamped it about three, four years ago, and oftentimes, because of traffic flow, it's a carefully orchestrated LA, he will go up and get the kids and bring them down, and I happened to be in the hallway, he made signs, so our kids are half a zero voice level in the hallway, because half of our kids are in recess, but the other half are still in instruction. Larry took it upon himself and made zero voice level signs, so he teaches the kids. When we came back from Christmas break, I'm in the hallway, and it was indoor recess, it rained that first day, and there was all like a two-minute line that they were going into the gym. Not a peep, not a peep. I'm like, Larry, the kids are doing awesome. He's like, well, because I, we just taught, went over the PBIS rules. I'm like, of course you did. So, this is why Larry is recognized for being an outstanding member. So, thank you, Larry, respect the work that you do, and you hang in there, and he works with mostly females, and I'll leave it at that. So, thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
[applause] Mary, congratulations. Larry, congratulations. [applause] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Yeah, for sure. You know, as a grandparent now, my oldest two grandchildren have started elementary school, and they love it, and they love playing school. So, when we're together, "Oh, Grammy, you know, can we play school? Let's do this. Let's do that," which I love, because I have a crazy decades-long passion for education. But recognizing that they're learning differently now from how not only I learn, but their parents too. And so, I love the math part about teaching them several strategies and them having the opportunity to choose the one that works best for them. And because I can already see, when I'm doing math problems with them, that it doesn't line up the same way that they're used to doing it, you know? And so, we work together, and we get through it. But I like that for kids, because different kids learn different ways. So, I think it's really nice that you give them that opportunity to learn different ways and choose the one that works best for them, as long as they can explain it, as long as they can get to the right answer. So, that's a really nice thing. And it sounds like your staff's on board, doing really great stuff for kids, too. So, I love that, and good luck in closing the gap. You know, I always love to hear that parents are instructional partners. I think it's a really important partnership to have between a school and a parent can support their child's job, which is what education is when they're little squirts, and that they can work on that together. I think that's really, really important. So, I'm happy to see how much you value that as well. Uh, let me see. I'm going to try to skip most of this stuff and get to a couple things that I wanted to. Congratulations on your Silver Award for PBIS. I'm glad that's working out so nicely. And thanks for recognizing Mr. Keating. I think that was...
He deserves it.
Very generous and kind to do that as well. I love the meetings, you know? Been to some workshops on restorative practices and have participated in some of that and find it to be helpful. I think it's really good for kids. And I love the, "Everyone's welcome here," the diversity part, celebrating the diversity. I think when kids learn young about that, it helps them grow up to be better people.
They can teach us great things.
Yeah, yeah. And I think a lot of times, we don't see the kind of support that we'd like to see in their life away from school in terms of celebrating the diversity of others and appreciating the diversity of others. So, I'm really happy to see that and that it's working well for you. And I love the asking kids what they think. Yay! What an outrageous idea to ask them, you know, what's important to them. And clearly, a lot of what you're doing is working well, because they like it. And I must admit, the part about they feel safe at your school is pretty wonderful, because that's an awful thing for a child not to be able to feel safe in their environment. So, hooray for that. And I would love to come to your school and celebrate sometime the wonderful history of Parma Park. And even though things are changing in the district, I, you know, I know kids will do well. They will transition okay, and that you're including parents in helping them do that, I think is an important piece as well. So, I'd like to come and celebrate with you as things progress in the school year.
Thank you.
Okay. And hooray, they're gone. But congratulations to your teachers and your staff. I've known Mary Hart for many years. Not surprised she's being recognized. Larry, a little bit. Know Gwen a lot. But we were parents going through school together with our kids. So, not surprised he's recognized as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Are you sure you just want to say anything else?
Well, yeah, everything except for the grandparent part. I don't want to find out about that yet.
Just want to say, great job. You make us all proud. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us talk about our...
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Jewell.
Okay, Ms. Abo. You're up. Please feel free to stick to the suggested 10 to 12 minutes. Thank you.
That's overachiever.
I have a loud voice, too. I'm Italian. So, less than three years ago, I had an opportunity to stand before you as schools were shutting down and the world was headed into unprecedented times and present to you a vision of a program for our most intensive students with autism. At the time, that's all it was, a vision. There were no walls. There was no staff. There were no students. It was merely the hope of what could be and the anticipated steps to make it happen. It was our best guess. Hope prevailed. The steps, our best guess, well, those had to be reworked again and again and again. But in the end, it came down to flexibility and problem-solving that has allowed us to become the successful program we are, a therapy-based educational model rooted in developmental practice. Achievement in terms of education is typically measured by standardized assessment. However, for our students, achievement at its core is a thing done successfully typically by effort, courage, and skill. And so, while I recognize that standardized assessment is typical practice, tonight, I want to highlight for you two students who, by definition, have succeeded at Aces. Yes, we teach extended standards. Yes, we teach them and expose them to skills that their same-age peers are doing. But the invaluable skills that we teach them will never show up directly on a test, because we start with relationships, which is measurable and invaluable. These relationships are the cornerstone to building a developmental foundation for our students. So, two of our students I'd like to highlight is Student A, who came to the Parma City School District as a Ukrainian refugee in her kindergarten year. Her family spoke no English, and she was a limited communicator. Today, as a fourth-grade student, having started at Aces with us as a second grader, she is able to read stories in English verbally, use her voice to communicate her wants and needs in English, and completes math problems with some assistance. She continues to use a communication device to support her unknown words and is able to follow a schedule, interact with adults, and has the most amazing creativity you've ever seen. Just wait. I promise you, one day, you will see her working as an interior designer or fashion designer. Student B came to us halfway through her kindergarten year, having previously attended a local preschool for students with disabilities. This student demonstrated behavior that impeded her learning to the extent that when she arrived at Aces, we were her fourth placement in her kindergarten year.
Oh, my.
After seven months of building a relationship, establishing expectations, and being consistent in those expectations, this student has graduated Aces and is currently participating in a small-group special education classroom within one of our traditional schools. She is reading, writing, and completing math within grade-level standards. And one day, this student is going to be a lawyer, fighting for justice, demanding equity, and chocolate ice cream. While these are two stories of achievements, we continue to move forward in the pursuit of our students' learning, which is why we have worked the past two years to research evidence-based practices and strategies for our moderate-to-intensive students, develop resources that meet their individualized needs, and implement curricular resources and assessment that focus on a developmental framework and use a student-centered approach. These tools that we have found and researched and developed are helping us build the bridge of consistency in foundational skills with our K-12 multiple disabilities classrooms. Aces and our K-12 MD staff are working together through professional development to research and unpack priority standards, develop consistency in our assessment measures, and eventually implement similar curricular resources across both environments. A concern that we are constantly working towards and trying to implement better practices for has to do a lot with the challenge of the expressive communication deficits our students show, which is why vocabulary is a focus that we have at Aces. This is the focus based on data collection from criteria-based assessments, standardized assessments, and IEP progress. And these are three curricular resources that we are using currently that all have specific and explicit vocabulary to teach our students to build those skills. When we look at our Resilient Learner side of the playbook, two students that we want to focus on tonight is how we model and have built relationships with them and provide an environmental flexibility in order for them to succeed. And this is our universal practice. Student A is a student who returned to the district after previously accessing scholarship. Their behaviors demonstrated were a function of seeking attention, whether that be negative or positive. Each member of the student's team has built a relationship with the student individually, and by removing, by remaining consistent in their classroom expectations, we've seen behaviors significantly decrease, allowing for more on-task instruction. Student B is a student who thrives on structure and routine. They take comfort in knowing what is coming next in their day and where they're headed next. By providing a schedule to them in which they had input in and part of, we have seen a decreased number of environmental variables as well. And now, this student is successfully able to navigate their day independently with minimal behavior. They love coming to school and are consistently wanting staff and students to smile throughout their day. We focus on the restorative practices of our playbook, looking at relationship, responsibility, and self-regulation. At Aces, that looks like building trust-based relationships with each of our students and having a healthy and positive building culture. Our students learn to be responsible for both their words and their actions within a framework that is age and developmentally appropriate. And our related service team that consists of our occupational therapist, our physical therapist, our speech and language pathologist, and our behavior specialist support our classroom teams in collaborating and establishing proactive and data-driven self-regulation strategies and supports across all environments. An area that we are constantly working on is the social-emotional learning. This requires specific skills to be taught in each of these areas. Moving forward, our goal is to continue moving on developing lessons and opportunities for building these skills. Our students require that when we teach these skills, that they are explicit, authentic, and then able to be generalized. And at this time, it starts with the consistency and expectations and the support across staff. Some things I'd like to highlight of Aces is that we are a positive team of advocates. We take a problem-solving approach to all of our concerns and student difficulties, and we are support to our families. Tonight, I would like to recognize two staff members. Kim Tomko Karafa has been a teacher in the Parma City School District, teaching moderate-intensive students for 22 years. She's been at Aces for three years. She's an exemplar leader of Aces, a PTA secretary, and truly embodies the four pillars of Aces, accepting all students and championing for opportunities in their education and in their lives, and is a wavering supporter of staff and families. On the classified staff side, I'd like to recognize Anna Daynut. She has been at Aces for three years. She is an RBT-certified and CPI-certified staff member. She is our PTA treasurer. She is resilient and consistent, and she builds relationships with each student, sets high expectations for each, believing their capacity and potential. Thank you.
Come on up, ladies.
[inaudible]
That may make the paper.
What's that?
That may make the paper.
At least it pleased her. But, yeah, he's got it. Just did it.
Kayla, you want to come up and see if there's any questions?
Could you guys have any questions for Ms. Abo?
Go ahead.
Oh, congratulations on having the vision for the program and bringing it into existence and having success. I love hearing the examples of student success. I think that's pretty wonderful to talk about their growth, talk about their individual uniqueness, and for you to have a vision for some outstanding future that they will have. I think that's pretty great. And I did notice on your presentation, too, I don't think you mentioned it, but the savings because we're, to the school district, because we were able to have that program here. And I think sometimes people worry that, oh, just having the program here makes the savings. Being able to serve the children is what makes the big difference, you know? That we can have those programs that care for kids, especially that have certain needs that are not in other classrooms, perhaps. And so, thank you for all that you do with that. I'm impressed with the caring that you clearly have, along with your staff, for all of these little squirts, you know? I mean, I think it's an extra-special staff that comes together and cares for kids. And I know some days are different than others, with kids change and don't have the same thoughts and ideas and behaviors every single day. And to be able to adapt to that and meet them where they're at and care for them where they're at and what they need is pretty wonderful. So, congratulations. I'm thrilled that the program is doing so well. And thanks for what you do, all of you. Congratulations to the award winners tonight.
Mark?
Don't say ditto.
I won't say ditto this time. Out of, you know, when the schools that are closing and how it's going to be hard on a lot of kids, I always, you know, I worry that your students are going to ones that are going to be the hardest to adapt to all this. But I've been at Aces, and I've met a lot of your staff, and I have full faith that you guys will be able to help these kids with that transition as best as possible. So, good luck there. Congratulations to you guys. And I like what you do there. I mean, I've never had a bad word to, even if you have a bad thought about what you guys do there. I think it's awesome, so.
Just great job. Great job.
That's better than ditto.
That's better than ditto.
All right. So, I'm so, what an impressive program you developed over the time. I can remember sitting here, well, not in this room particularly, but sitting here listening to, hey, we need to start the Aces program, driving out the manner to see what they were doing, and saying that you're going to be hired to do this. And you were excited and thrilled and ready to jump on it, and you have. It's amazing. In the three short years that are here, the amount of savings. I can recall people being really kind of negative about, oh, no one will ever come back, you know, this isn't going to happen. They think they're crazy. And, you know, my goodness, you showed them different. So, and that's outstanding. So, I'm very pleased with that. Staff, you know, it shows, because you have caring staff, you know? And it shows that you're a good leader, and you get your people to do great things, and that's what makes a good leader. All right. So, thank you. Thanks, ladies, and everybody coming in, and we appreciate you being here. Sorry it was such a cavern. I like it when it's a little more cozy. But, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an ELA curriculum adoption. Dr. Stropko.
Well... Just kidding.
Did you not help yourself on that one? Is that it? Couldn't hold it.
Thank you to our staff of Aces. Did Mrs. Jewell already leave, too? I was going to thank her. Yeah, I think she did. Okay. This would conclude that portion, and I think we've had enough information on the board in our two previous sessions for me, so I will yield my time, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, let's move on. We have communications, Mrs. Brats. I want you to go ahead and handle this.
I can handle it.
So, communications, anybody have anything for the board?
No.
Nothing.
Nope. Pressure, nothing? Okay, skip that. At this point, we open, at this point, we open the meeting to public participation. Do we have any? No? Okay. Amendments?
No.
No? Okay. Let's keep moving on here. We don't need adopt amendments. I can remember sitting here, well, not in this room particularly, but sitting here listening to, hey, we need to start the stasis program, driving out the men to see what they were doing, and, and saying that you're going to be hired to do this, and, and you were excited and thrilled and ready to jump on it, and, and you have. It's, it's, it's amazing. In the three short years that are here, the amount of savings, I can recall people being really kind of negative about, oh, no one will ever come back, you know, this isn't going to happen, they think they're crazy, and, you know, my goodness, you showed them different, so, and that's outstanding. So I'm very pleased with that. Staff, you know, it shows because you have caring staff, you know, and it shows that you're a good leader, and you get your, your people to do great things, and that's what makes a good leader. All right, so thank you, and thanks, ladies, and everybody coming in, and we appreciate you being here. I'm sorry it was such a cavern. I like it when it's a little more cozy, but, all right, thank you.
Next, we have a ELA curriculum adoption, Dr. Chapko.
You got to help yourself on that one, is that it?
Couldn't hold that.
Thank you to our staff of ACES. Did Mrs. Jewell already leave too? I was going to thank her. Yeah, I think she did. Okay, this would conclude that portion, and I think we've had enough information on the board in our two previous sessions from me, so I will yield my time, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right, so let's move on. We have communications, Mrs. Bratz, I want you to go ahead and handle this. I can't handle it. So, communicates, anybody have anything for the board?
No.
Nothing? Nope. Doctor, nothing? Okay, skip that. At this point, we open, at this point, we open the meeting to public participation. Do we have any? No? Okay. Amendments? No. Okay, let's keep moving on here. We don't need adopt amendments. So I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-11, the approval of the written record of proceedings from December 15th, 2022, regular, and December 30th, 2022, Special Board of Education meetings. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-11. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-01-11 has been approved. Uh, Mr. Ruda, would you please second? Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Curriculum, Mrs. Bratz?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I moved to adopt nothing this evening.
I second that.
You second that?
I second that.
We have no items on the agenda this evening for curriculum.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Bratz.
Unless someone else has something to discuss.
All right. That brings us to business. Mr. Ruda, please.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-12, retaining a professional services, retaining all professional services firm for moving services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-12. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-01-12 has been approved.
Twenty-three, 2023. You're still in twenty-three.
I'm sorry, 2023-01-12. I think I could read.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-13, Ohio Schools Council Governance Policy Change Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, to adopt Resolution 2023-01-13. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-01-11 has been approved. Uh, Mr. Ruda, would you please second? Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Curriculum, Mrs. Bratz?
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I moved to adopt nothing this evening.
I second that.
You second that?
I second that.
We have no items on the agenda this evening for curriculum.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Bratz.
Unless someone else has something to discuss.
All right. That brings us to business. Mr. Ruda, please.
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-12, retaining a professional services, retaining all professional services firm for moving services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-12. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-01-12 has been approved.
Twenty-three, 2023. You're still in twenty-three.
I'm sorry, 2023-01-12. I think I could read.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-13, Ohio Schools Council Governance Policy Change Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, to adopt Resolution 2023-01-13. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, what's that all about?
Yeah. Charlie, can you go over, because it sounds like it should be something that's in policy committee, not business, so.
Well, we subscribe to the Ohio Schools Council, and so we are just actually saying that we concur with the change that they are making. So the Ohio Schools Council is sort of a purchasing consortium, so when we have something that could typically go out for bid, we can actually just turn to the Ohio School Councils, who have, who has already gone through that bidding system, and therefore it really takes a lot of time and effort away from us, they've done that work for us, and they are simply tweaking their policy, and we're just adopting it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-13 has been approved.
Okay, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Fine job, as usual. Finance, Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-01-14, a resolution declaring the necessity of submitting the question of the issuance of school improvement bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $199 million for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new high school, renovating, rehabilitating, remodeling, constructing, adding to, furnishing, equipping, and otherwise improving other school district buildings and facilities, and clearing, equip, equipping, and otherwise improving sites for those school, school district buildings and facilities to the, to the electors of the school district pursuant to Section 133.18 of the, of the Revised Code and requesting related certifications of the Cuyahoga County, the Cuyahoga Fiscal Officer.
Second.
We have a second, a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-14. Any questions or comments from the board?
This just allows me to send it to the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to get the millage. This does not say we're putting it on the ballot. This is just the first step.
Okay. All right, thank you. Very good. Roll call, Mr. Nusio, then.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-14 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-01-15, Approval of Supplemental Appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-15. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2023-01-15 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-01-16, Acceptance of Contributions and Donations.
We have.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-16. Any questions or comments from the board? I thank people as usual. Thank you very much for thanking the Parma City School District and your generosity. A lot of neat things up there. So thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Anybody else?
Well, you had a Colton Jennings, wow. That's very generous.
That's outstanding. Thank you so much. Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-16 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss in finance, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis, appreciate it. Moves us to legislation, Mrs. Bratz?
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing today, very good. Well, that brings us still on to you for human resources, Mrs. Bratz. And Mr. Kreis, would you please second?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-17, Approval of the Following Certificated Exhibits, Confirmation of Certificated Replacements, Confirmation of Stipend amounts, Confirmation of Supplemental Contracts.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-17. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-17 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-01-18, Acceptance of Certificated Retirement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-18. This is a, any questions or comments from the board? There's a very special guy here. I coached football with this gentleman a long, long time ago here at Parma High. He's a good dude, was also a wrestling coach, and I know that, yeah, he has some.
I was in high school when he started, so him being able to retire just makes me feel really old, but he'll definitely be missed. He was a really, really good teacher, really got kids involved, and he was involved with the wrestling and all that. I, they'll miss him, for sure.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-18 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-19, Approval of the Following Classified Exhibits, Confirmation of Classified Appointments Replacements, Confirmation of Classified Resignations, Approval of Classified Non-Compensated Leaves of Absence.
Second. We have a sec, uh, sorry, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-19. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-19 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-01-20, Acceptance of Classified Retirement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-120. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-20 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-01-1, Confirmation of Classified Administrative Specialist Appointment Replacement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-21. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-21 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude human resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. This brings us to policies. Mr. Ruda.
Yes, I move to, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-22, Approval of the Following Revised Policies, Policy 123.01, Development of Administrative Guidelines, Policy 2280, Preschool Program, Policy 2412, Homebound Instruction Program, Policy 2413, Career Advising, Policy 20, or, I'm sorry, 3231.01, Staff Tutoring, Policy 5409, Student Acceleration, and Policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act.
Second. Excuse me, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-22. Any questions or comments from the board? I'm assuming these are all.
Yeah, they're all Neola stuff, things like that.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-22 has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-23, Approval of Technical Policy Changes, Policy 4111, Creating a Position, Policy 6521, Employee Charitable Giving Campaigns, Policy 6610, Student Activity Fund, Policy 6620, Penny Cash, Petty Cash Checking Accounts, and Athletic Petty Cash Funds.
Second. We have, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-01-23. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2023-01-23 has been approved.
Okay, this is the first reading of the following revised policy. Do I have to move to adopt it?
No. Just read it.
Okay, Policy 4112, Board Staff Communications, Policy 5111, Eligibility of Residents, Non-Residents Students, Policies 6423, Use of Credit Cards. First reading for the following new policies, Policy 5335, Care of Students with Chronic Health Conditions. And the first reading for the removal of the following policies, Policy 9600, Staff Student Participation in Community Events.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Anything else?
No. Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. If nobody has anything else to discuss, then this will conclude policy.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda, appreciate it.
Wasn't on my script.
Oh, you don't, I got you. It's good to add a little bit, though. That's why I asked. Do we have any information requests by board members?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Smilak.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you, I guess, find out and let us know about what the plans are for the schools that will be closing this year for the rest of the year, the kinds of celebrations or special activities that they will be having to, you know, commemorate the years that they've been open, whatever they're going to be doing. I'd appreciate it if you let us know about those things.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Does that include the, like, the walkthroughs and stuff, any of that stuff that we're having?
Everything you can find.
Yeah. Because I've been getting a lot of questions about people at Renwood and Parma or whatever, one last time.
Yeah, and we do have walkthroughs planned, so we will absolutely do that.
Excellent. Are there any questions or concern to be written on record? No, we don't need executive session. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-01-25 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you, like, three people. All right, we have a motion and a seconds to adopt Resolution 2023-01-25. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.